Twenty-two and it is 6:00 P.M. We are one left. Everyone's present. We are going to get started with a presentation of salary survey results by the University of Texas Arlington graduate students. And, oh.
I'm going to introduce Ms. Caitlin Sheehan. She is part of the group that we have utilized their graduate students working on their master's degrees in HR. All but one, all but one is working specifically in a HR degree plan. So, we have tasked them with a salary survey and they have done an excellent job. What you will hear tonight is a very high-level presentation and go into it knowing that you will hear more as we go through the budget process. It's a little bit early to start talking about COLAs and salary adjustments and things like that, but what they did, they provided a valuable service for us in gathering the data that we will be utilizing throughout the budget process. So, and they also have a final tonight, so they have a hard stop at 6:30. So, I just want to set expectations going into it. And with that, I will turn it over to Kay.
Good evening. I'm Caitlin Sheehan. I'm one of the graduate students. So, this survey was done as part of our organization consulting and research course, which is one of the required courses for the human resource management program at UTA. I was appointed as project manager by our advising professor, Dr. Charles Hesum. So, I was the one that did weekly meetings with Kim and Swen Shana was in on them as well and kind of the go-between between the rest of our group and you guys. So, here's our team. We gave ourselves like a fake company name, Maverick HR Consulting, just because it was a little easier that way. So, Julia Torres is here tonight with us, Danica and Brianna should be here any minute. They got some traffic. And then we also have Manakshi and Sean. Sean is our one MBA student who's taking, who's in our group. And then the rest of us, like I said, are human resource manager track students. So, kind of the agenda, we're going to go over the goals of what your human resource department kind of gave us and tasked us with for the project, the process we went through, results, summary of findings, some trends that we found, and then our recommendations, findings and trends and such, and then what those recommendations mean, impact to the city's budget, and then some time, which we should. So, this is kind of the request for proposal outline that we got from the city. So, we surveyed eighty-nine positions across ten market cities in the area. We reviewed an additional like selection of positions in relation to private sector, those where the city has compete with private industry or candidates as well as competitiveness of pay, determining market placement for all those positions and looking at what positions were below market, things like that, establishing recommendations for cost of living, salary adjustments for the next fiscal year, keeping in mind the current inflation rates. And then we surveyed market cities for what their anticipated increases were for and pay schedule adjustments for the next year, and then illustrate the impact of all those adjustments on the budget. So, here's kind of just a brief outline of our process. We started by matching each of the eighty-nine Highland Village positions with those market city positions and seeing if they had a comparable position and what it was, and then inputting their current salaries as well as the salary ranges for those positions. Then we took those selection and compared them to the private sector, researched what those positions looked like in the private sector and what their pay was, determining mid-market, and then we did research on current cost of living adjustment recommendations and research and things like that, and then determination of individual salary adjustments on positions that were below mid-market. So, for the private sector drop matching, we looked at twenty positions against their private sector counterparts to see if the Highland Village salaries were competitive with private sector pay. The criteria for those positions was first and foremost, those positions where the city competes with private industry, like police and fire weren't ones we looked at in comparison to private sector, they just don't exist. And then we did straightforward matching as much as possible based on the duties and responsibilities of the Highland Village jobs. Example departments were IT positions, finance, HR, customer service, and maintenance. We primarily looked at the Bureau of Labor Statistics information because that's the most reliable data, but we also looked at Glassdoor, Indeed, A-Scale, Salary.com, Zippa. Glassdoor is a little bit of a mixed bag because that's a self-report site, and so what one person might consider their base pay is different than what another person might, what somebody might consider their Christmas bonus as part of their base pay and others would not. So, that data is a little bit less reliable, it was included in our big spreadsheet, but kind of highlighted off to the side noting that I have to weigh it less heavily than, say, BLS information. Our cost of living adjustment recommendations were based on two sources, BLS being one of them, as well as market city responses. So, we reached out to all ten cities and asked them, each of them two questions. One was what was that city's projected fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three salary increase amount, and what is the city's target market pay range, whether mid-range, being for bottom third, top third, et cetera. So, this is current, most updated BLS data for twelve months ending March twenty-two. The National Consumer Price Index is currently at eight point five percent. DFW is a little higher at nine percent, so cost of goods are up, all of our gas prices are up, as we all know. And then the employment cost index for government positions is currently at three point two percent, which is up a little over half a percent just from December of twenty-one. So, it's going up considerably. So, we got responses from eight of the ten, which I was really intrigued about. Four of the cities anticipated salary increases of three to four percent for their next year, and two cities expected awarding increases of two to two and a half percent. And then as far as target market strategy, three, sorry, reported that they also target mid-market, just like Highland Village. Three cities target the top third, and then two haven't adopted a target market pay range at all at this time. So, after we looked at all the data, we put it all in, looking at the numbers, we kind of divided the positions that fell below mid-market into two categories. The first is those positions that fell between the thirty-fifth, forty-second percentile. They, in our recommendations, were eligible for an additional zero to two and a half percent increase on salary on top of their cost of living adjustment. Then there's those positions that fell below the thirty-fifth percentile, they were eligible for a three to four percent increase on top of COLA. Those positions also were reviewed further for potential shifting within the current Highland Village pay schedule. So, if a position is, say, currently at pay range twenty-four, but it's coming in at like fourteenth percentile, our recommendation was to move it up to the twenty-fifth, or pay range twenty-five, so that future recruits and also your existing employees' salary range for their position was at a more competitive place here at this point and moving forward. So, this is just a graphical representation of our results. Forty-eight, the blue, the dark blue, were at or above mid-market, those positions were fine. Five in the gray were in that thirty-fifth to forty-second percentile. Thirty-three positions in yellow were below thirty-fifth percentile. And then of the eight director level positions, which includes fire and police chief, there were three positions that we kind of noted needed further review because they appeared to be a little bit below their counterparts at the market cities in relation to their higher year and years of experience. So, that was taken into account, those higher level positions. And here's just a kind of another look at that same information. Forty-three percent fell below mid-market, thirty-seven percent fell below the thirty-fifth percentile, five point six percent fell between the thirty-fifth and forty-second percentile. And then when we compared to private sector, it was, you guys were really on par with private sector for those relative, those relevant positions. There was only really two that we noted that were on the very low end of what private sector would be for a position, but they weren't necessarily below private sector, they were just on the lower. Some trends, public safety positions, police and fire, were highly competitive across all positions in those departments. The crew leaders across Park Streets and Drainage all fell below mid-market. And then many of the part-time positions were found to not be meeting. Our recommendations kind of have four categories. The first is that cost of living adjustment. Our recommendation is a three percent adjustment to all employees across the board, all positions. The second is that zero to two and a half percent additional increase to positions that were in the thirty-fifth, forty-second percentile. The third piece is additional increase for those below the thirty-fifth percentile of three to four percent. And then the fourth piece is shifting those positions that were below thirty-fifth percentile up in the pay ranges so that they remain competitive. And here's what all that means as far as dollars and cents to the city. This is estimated based on like part-time salary information that we were given. So, current payroll costs for this fiscal year are about three point eight six billion. The three percent cost of living adjustment, that alone would equal three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then the cost of living market salary increases would be an additional hundred and twenty-four, five oh six dollars. And then the, which totals for a total increased salary cost of four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three for a new projected payroll costs of eleven point million. And that equals out, I think, to about four point one percent increase overall, percentage-wise of, from the current payroll to the projected payroll. Is that it? Yes?
So, a COLA of three percent, the Consumer Price Index is up nine percent. How do you weigh those in your survey and then what you're learning in school?
A lot of it has to do with, you know, we knew we had to take into account that city and cities are limited by income, you can't always award as much of an increase as, say, private sector. But a minimum of three percent allows the city to kind of stay on par with what's happening across the nation's first increases for salary and what's happening in the cities just surrounding you, to stay on par with what.
The thirty-fifth to forty-second percentile, does that represent mid-market?
So, we kind of, we extended the concept of mid-market, which would normally end at thirty-fifth percentile, down to forty-third because there was a handful of positions that were between forty-three and fifty that were really at mid-market, but the data spread in the salaries was so tight, I mean, we're talking like fifty dollars difference between, you know, four cities or something like that. So, they were, it was calculating as if it was in like the forty, forty percentile, but really when we looked at the actual numbers, it was right in the middle with everybody else. So, that's why it wasn't in forty-second percentile that we started to look at.
On the part-time positions, when you were looking at the comparable cities, were you, the part-time versus part-time?
Yes, yeah, comparable part-time positions, crossing yard to crossing yard. That's right.
So, on your comparable positions, you have a list of, okay, so for, I'm just going to say, for a city manager, what that would compare to in the private sector?
In the private sector, no, because there's, city manager wasn't one of the ones that we did, but those positions that we did, we do have.
Police chief?
Police chief, no, not against the private sector.
Dog catcher?
Dog catcher.
No, he's a dog.
But like things like payroll specialist. Yeah.
She mentioned IT.
IT, all the IT positions we surveyed, yes.
And you found that most part, they're higher at Highland Village than they are in the private sector? Is that right?
No, there, so, like the IT positions, there's a huge range.
Right.
In, you know, like certain positions.
But there was something you said when you were comparing the two earlier.
She said they were competitive.
They were competitive, yeah. You're right in the range of kind of the average salary for that position. Highland Village is right in the ballpark of kind of the average for a position. If you kind of take out, you know, like HR director, there's like somebody that reports me like four hundred thousand dollars, that's not going to go up in most cases for an HR director. So, if you kind of take out those like really high-end salaries that are not common, you guys were right, right in front of salary.
One question in fifteen parts, but. First question, can you just briefly describe how you, what you considered salary and if you considered benefit packages, bonuses, how that was structured on private versus public markets?
We were just given the actual salaries, no benefit information, no bonus information, just the annual salaries of all the employees. That's what we were given and compared to at the other market cities as well. We had their actual salaries as well, but no benefits were not included.
So, then the second answer is probably easy, but I was just wondering if you factored in culture or, you know, non-monetary benefits of work for public organization over private?
We didn't, honestly, this was like, this was a ton of data to go through. So, as our professors would say, like, this is a great opportunity for the city to pull in another group of graduate students in another semester to look at those things. That was beyond, that was beyond our scope. So, that was beyond our scope and also beyond kind of what we had the capacity to in one semester.
Did you do the mayor comparison salary?
Yeah.
You didn't? You didn't share?
Right on target.
But as far as what?
Do other mayors get their gavels when they leave?
Oh, my God.
What were the, what were the other cities that you, that you compared us to?
I wrote it down because I knew I was forgetting. It's Capel, Corinne, Hollyville, Flower Mound, Keller, Little Elm, Lewisville, Murphy, Saxon, and Southlake.
So, that, a lot of those matched the list that you use, correct? I mean, that's.
No, we provided. She gave me the list, yeah, that's her list.
I was going to give you a whole bunch of.
No, that's her list, yeah, they gave us that list, yeah. Which was determined by.
Any aha moments? I mean, things that surprised you on the data about our city or how we compared?
I would, it was, it was really great to see a city entity, especially, you know, you're not Alice or Fort Worth or me, one of the bigger cities, to see that you guys were right, kind of on par with private sector, that we compared to private. I really didn't know how that data was, that was one of those kind of data that I was like, oh, how is this going to end up? So, it was nice, it was good to see that, you know, a public city is able to keep their pay comparable to private sector.
Good information.
Yeah.
Very good. Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Long day.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, speaking of, last question then. What made you as a group pick our city when you were given the assignment or how was that?
The mayor.
So, our professor broke our class up, and I think there was six groups for the class. All right. A couple of the groups were simulation groups, people who weren't able to meet clients because they were in a full-time job. People on the program were full-time classes. So, he assigned the groups. But at the beginning of the semester, he had us all fill out a survey that asked us questions on like, how competent are you at PowerPoint and data analytics and all these different things so that each group got kind of a good mix of skills. And I feel like we did. Sean has a very different set of skills than I do, and, you know, I came to him with a lot of the kind of data digging, that kind of stuff. So, we had a good spread of skills too.
And how'd you pick our city? What made you pick our city?
We didn't, we didn't. The professor assigned it, yeah, and he reached out to you guys. I'm not sure how that.
There's a city contact, Rodney Williken at the Colony, I believe, the HR group.
Yeah, because one of the groups was the Colony.
And he went through the program, so he had knowledge of it and sent it out to our HR group and said, hey, if anybody has any projects for these students, you've done an excellent job, and they do, they did. But he had actual old projects that they had done for the Colony that we could look at, and it's top-quality work, and, you know, we can really utilize this work that they did to help us make our, our decisions this summer.
Awesome. Anybody else got any questions? Thank you so much. We know that you have to get the finals. Yeah, really, really, they should get A's. How do we let the, let the professor know?
I will send him an email.
Perfect, sir. Really appreciate y'all doing that.
I did not just notice, I mean.
Counsel, any clarification of consent or action items on today's South meeting? Can you do that?
Tom has a clarification.
No, he does have a clarification.
I don't have a clarification, I just have a question.
Okay.
So, Ken, I, I took some time this time to read the investment report that you put in the.
This time, you get that?
Well.
You took it this time.
I always do it, but I took a little bit more. Okay, don't, please. So, I remember when I first came on council, the RFP came out for banks and where we're going to move our, huh?
I said, no, go ahead.
Can I finish?
You can, go ahead.
Maybe.
Maybe. So, anyway, so, so I noticed this time, when our RFP came out back, when I came on council in twenty nineteen, you know, we decided to move our banking relationship to Wells Fargo. I don't remember Southside Bank being on our RFP. Southside Bank is listed on the investment report?
Yeah, we just invest. They're, they're a broker.
Southside Bank?
So, we buy CDs from them.
Okay, the one out of town.
They offer very good rates, and, you know, we have our investment advisors who, you know, we have approved brokers and they solicit, when we have a couple million we want to invest, we get bids, and for the last couple of years, Southlake has been one, Southside has been one of our best bids that we get.
Okay.
Market's moving away from CDs right now, we're going to be going back into treasuries and agencies, so that's what you're going to see probably now going forward.
All right. And has Wells Fargo done anything with their earnings credit? Because that fifty basis points earnings credit is way higher than the market.
Well, it wasn't initially, so that's something we need to really engage with them on. I don't have a answer immediately for that.
Okay. I'd just be curious. And then sidebar, I'll come to you, there was one other question I have, but not to burden you, just, oh, just.
Sure. You can.
Thank you, but no, I'm good.
Anybody else have a clarification?
We could talk about, we could talk about.
We're going to go into closed session now.
Traps, traps, trapeze.
We are, you want, do you want to bring that up?
No, ma'am.
We really are going into closed session.
Do you want to talk about the nomination?
Oh, do you want to do that now?
We can, yeah.
Oh, we're told clarification on the DENTO on the agenda.
So, it's on, yeah, it's on action. Every year, one of the board directors on DENTO, Area 911, their term expires. So, this year, Jim Carter's term expires, and he, participating cities have an opportunity to nominate a candidate to their slate of nominees. So, Jim Carter has expressed interest in serving again. He certainly can be nominated again, or if there's someone else that you guys would rather nominate, that you can do that as well.
I think he's going to email today.
Yes.
Everybody. So, and I think last meeting, we kind of discussed and everybody was too good with that, is nominating him. So, if that's the consensus, we can move it to that item, if that's consensus in council, or do you want to have it on discussion on the dais? Okay. So, when we do the, whoever does the motion, what's his name? So, okay. Okay, now, under section five five one oh seven one, she's called consultation with city attorney concerning pending for conculpative litigation and on any regular session or work session agenda item requiring confidential attorney client advice necessitated by deliberation or discussion of said item as needed and the time is six twenty-five. or discussion of said item as needed at the time of 6:25.
Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is March, wow, May the 10th, 2022 and it is 7:00 PM. Let the record show all the council members are present. And we are going to get started with a prayer led by Councilman Jaworski and pledges. And I guess I should say Mayor-elect Jaworski.
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you to give thanks for the blessing of being able to serve our community. And as a new era is going to begin soon, we ask that you continue your blessings on those that are moving on to greener pastures. And we thank them for their service to our city, the dedication and passion that they've shown to our residents and to our community. And continue to bless them with good health and good favor. We also ask that you protect our first responders, police, fire and our military here at home and around the world. And allow everybody to return home after a successful watch to return home safely to their families. And we ask that you continue to bless our community, this great place that we live. And provide us the wisdom and the guidance to serve them well now and in the future. And all these things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.